Call the meeting order. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Hope everyone had a good 4th of July and the weekend after, too. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kupel, here.
Crystal Regan, here.
Kristy Hilton, here.
Artie Bryson, yes, here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Joanne Shurkey, here.
Mark Bouchard, here.
Okay, first thing on agenda is bills payable. Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of eighty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
Support? Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan, yes.
Kristy Hilton, yes.
Artie Bryson, yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Joanne Shurkey, yes.
Mark Bouchard, yes.
Sandy Kupel, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have public comments. Is there any public comments? We got, okay, go ahead first.
I assume this is what we can talk about. I'm here to address the problem, this ongoing problem on Flamingo, on weed buildup by the Flamingo Bridge.
Sir, could I interrupt you? I'm up here. Could you state your name and your address, please?
Charles Dewey, seventy-two thirty-two Flamingo.
Thank you.
Anyways, it's been an ongoing problem. And we know the reason for it because the other bird streets, they put a lot of poison in the canals, kills the weeds, and they all build up. The prevailing current brings them down to the Flamingo Bridge to build up. I get it, I mean, I have no problem with that. We all want a pink canal, we all want to be able to enjoy it. And I emphasize, we all want to enjoy it. But here's the problem. Due to the prevailing current and this, and the fire department brings their truck down there, they're a fireboat, and they blow the weeds through. Been doing this for quite some time. And these are massive weed islands that come through. Well, now it's great for everybody else because the bridge is cleared, but the recipients on our side of Flamingo have to put up with this. And you guys probably don't know about it because you're probably not there. You can't go through it because it's so thick. Your intake side, your engines will block up. You'll be entangled with your props. So if you decide not to go voting that day, or maybe for a couple of days, to tense the meander back and forth, the weeds build up behind your boat. So you're constantly pushing these weeds away. As a resident, Clay Township, I pay my taxes like everybody else, and all the people on Flamingo pay their taxes like everybody else. I don't think they should be treated like a toilet and have this stuff flushed down Flamingo all the time. There's gotta be another answer for this besides what's been the prevailing answer, which was just blow it on through and forget about it. There's no reason why, if you're gonna push through with this fire truck, with this pumper, great, then come all the way back around and blow it up against the bank or something and get rid of it. But don't subject all the people in Flamingo to this for two or three days afterward. It's being done, summer's just started, and it's being done on a regular basis, probably weekly basis.
Been done twice so far, I think.
At least that.
Mm-hmm.
At least that. And it's ready to do it again. So I assume the whole, and the mat has just barely cleared from the last night, so it'll be coming out again. You don't want to assume that, Matt, because you can't get past those mats. It's a mess.
Mm-hmm.
I want to move in a new body, besides just lip service.
Well, I'm, you know, this is really the first time we heard about on the other side, so bad that you couldn't put a boat through it or anything, that I have anyhow.
I came to your office.
Right, and, um...
You said you'd get back to me, took my name and number. Never worked.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. But, you know, we can look at flushing it through some more with the fireboat, if that, we can do that, I don't know. I do remember talking to you, you said that we used to pull it out.
The previous supervisor, I actually had, when they came down the first time this year to take it out, they brought a big backhoe.
Right.
To reach down.
This time we did.
They could've removed it.
No, actually, I talked to the, our water department, I have our water department who's been here, what, since ninety-two, John?
How long have you been here, since ninety-two? Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. He's never recalled it, ever. We trucked it out, pulled it out and trucked it out like you suggested. I did contact the county road because it is their county bridge that's plugging it up with the piling to see if we could get some relief from them or a better idea, because they would have some better equipment to do that, and I had no luck doing that.
Well, then you should get a fireboat around, break it down, blow it up against the bank or whatever.
We can, we can look at that. I'll have the fire chief look at that.
I mean, it's gonna take a little more effort.
Right.
But rather than subjecting these people to this mess for, and this goes on a whole summer.
Right. And I, we've been doing this for a while, and this is the first year this has come to me.
Well, I've spoken to you in previous years.
Well, I, well, maybe you have, I'm not sure. I talked to a lot of people, but regardless, we'll take a look at it.
Could there be something else done besides looking at it? Because that seems to be the only thing that's happening is, we look at it and we forget about it.
Well, I, okay, call me tomorrow. I can't give you an answer right now. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
My name is Joe Wallach. I live at nine-one-seven-five Maynard. And I would've mentioned it at the end of the last meeting that I attended, but you don't have public comments at the end of the meeting, so I can't, I wasn't able to do it. At the last meeting I was, I attended, there was information indicating that the fire department folks got a raise to ten dollars an hour. And I was really happy to hear that. But what crossed my mind back in nineteen-seventy-eight, I was, I was working as an unskilled construction laborer, and I was making ten dollars and forty cents an hour in nineteen-seventy-eight. As a taxpayer and as a homeowner, when I heard that these guys just got a raise to ten dollars an hour, I was embarrassed. I don't know anything about the fire department, I don't know anybody that's in the fire department, but I don't know how people live on that kind of money these days. I just, I guess I'm just speaking on their behalf. It's embarrassing as a taxpayer and township resident.
Thank you. We are current, just so you know, we are currently negotiating a new contract with them. We just did that because we know it needs to be addressed and we wanted to do something quick. All right?
On reiterate, from what this gentleman said, I agree with what he said about it being a mess.
Mm-hmm.
But what I'm saying that was because the people on the bird streets have weed, kill the weeds, not true. We tried to get that through several years, nobody on those streets would buy into it. The problem is coming from, for nothing, Carter County, where they have a homeowners' association that makes them get by with that stuff.
Yeah.
And that's where it's coming from.
Well, anybody can treat their weeds in front of their own house. There's no law against that, and a lot of people do. They might not have it organized where they do the whole street or the whole canal, but you can go or call, call someone to do it for you, or go get the same stuff out of Home Depot to treat the weeds. And a lot of people are.
I can only speak for where I live, but I don't see much of that happen.
Right. Well, I, yeah, a lot of people are, because I get complaints. My neighbor's doing this, well, I'm sorry, it's legal.
The other thing I wanted to talk about, really, was I wanted to come up here and, you know, want to say it in native terms, being the mayor chief. I want to give you an adroit instead of an all shit. I talked to you at the last meeting about things that were going on down there in the pier.
Mm-hmm.
I was glad to see that you went down there yourself and looked at it. I'm glad to see a police presence there occasionally, but they need to get out of their cars. They don't, they just drive around and walk out to the end of the dock and say, hey, how you guys doing? You catching any fish? And, you know, police presence, I think, will make some of the people that we have out there give up on it. I was out there this eighteen, and I was trying to put it correctly, but a bunch of people from, I would say, Wayne County. And they think that dock belongs to people of Clay Township or St. Clair County.
It's Clay Township.
You ought to be a sign here saying it's for the residents.
Yeah, I don't think we can legally do that.
Believe that, because it's out in the water. But there's a lot, a lot of stuff that goes on there.
Mm-hmm.
Good job on getting the benches tightened down. Good job on getting the garbage cans empty. Good job on getting the bushes trimmed there by the sign where now when you pull out, you can see both ways down the highway, and so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Hello.
My name's Patricia Poby. I live at seven-two-eight-four Audubon. I went to your offices this morning. I brought some pictures in, and I spoke with James Froud. I have a ton of pictures here. My neighbor is doing some remodeling to the house next door to me. I have been in here five times now, including today, to complain about the mess. I talked to James Froud, and I told him that my neighbor is flooding a foot and a half into my yard with three inches of water. I told him that he had covered the drains and about jumped in the front yard, but he said it was construction material. Well, it's not. It's stuff he ripped out from the inside of the house, locked it on a trailer. So anyways, I told him about the problems with his homeowner. When he has a problem, he makes a reference to my deceased husband. It's my husband's fault, this is going wrong. My seawall is my husband's fault. I've had enough of this.
The homeowner, your neighbor says that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I told James I was filing a restraining order against this neighbor, and that my husband passed away seven months ago. You know what James said to me? He started laughing. I did not think it was funny. I told him my husband's death was not a laughing matter.
No.
And I left today with tears in my eyes. I also asked him about the view on the water. He said it's no longer forty-five degrees, it's straight ahead. I asked him to show me, he gave me a paper on fences. I've lived here thirty years. I don't want to move. My husband and I built this house. I just want to know what is going to be done with the mess next door.
Okay, I'll check it, I'll get with you tomorrow, I'll go by, check it out, I'll get ahold of you.
Would you like to look at these?
Well, you can give them to me, or I'll, I'll do a drive-by tomorrow myself.
Well, it's a mess, and the water that's flooding my property. My drains are working, I took pictures of my drains. I was told by Jim today, this guy didn't need drains because the house is being renovated. His gutters are, there is no gutters. He's got one two-inch PVC pipe in the middle of his yard, and it's draining the water from under the house. Now, I've seen rabbits come out of the house, I've seen a possum come out from under that house. He has open block in the foundation. I've also found dead mice in my flower beds. It's not nice, it's not pretty, he's devaluing our property. I am not the only neighbor to complain on Audubon.
How long has he been doing this project?
Seven, March.
March?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they plan on living in their boat. I don't know if that's legal, but next week they will be living in their boat.
Okay.
That's it.
What's the house number?
My number?
Your house number?
Seven-two-eight-four Audubon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments?
Fireworks, Bern Donnies on Boogaloo. New to the area, I've been here about a year and a half, almost two years now. And the house next door to us, nobody's lived there. I purchased a home for my mother-in-law. And nobody's lived there for quite a long time, twenty-five plus years, I'm gonna assume. They do cut them on every two weeks, but that's the only thing that's done from all the storms we've had up here, not the recent ones, a long time now. The front of the home, the aluminum siding is torn off, there's bird's nests in the front, the squirrels are living in the roof, there's rats on the first floor. Their shingles are falling off, torn off, those end up in my pool, on my pool cover. And I've come down and complained to the city once, followed up the week after, and I knew it was James, I think it was. Nothing you can do because there's not an aesthetic ordinance.
Right.
And I find this hard to believe for the amount of taxes that I pay that I have to live next door on, a home that's so unkept. Backdoor screen is flapping in the wind. The homeowner's son comes by once in a great while, and I talked to him, and all I get was, oh, yeah, we're kind of gonna work on the roof, and that's been two years, almost two years.
Is it upriver or downriver from you?
It is upriver.
Okay.
I'll give you the address, if there's no numbers on the house, on the garage or anything.
Do they have your, your phone number at the billing department?
I would think they would.
Okay. I'll, I'll check that out tomorrow or the next day.
And I also have one other question.
Sure.
The docks are around the river, my dock. If you were to park a commercial vessel there, is that all right? Or are they pretty zone commercial?
To do what, to work, or?
No, if there's being no work, then they're just, they're parked.
Yeah, you know what, that, we have, the township stops at the seawall, you'd have to take that up with either the DEQ or the sheriff marine patrol. We have no jurisdiction out there.
Okay.
So...
All right, thank you.
Yep. But if you want, I can give you, give them a call on your behalf, too. But, you know, if you're around tomorrow, is it okay if I go in your front yard now, take a look?
I believe you know Darren Gabriel.
Yeah.
Right? Well, his barges were always parked over by his building.
Mm-hmm.
And now he's moved them to this abandoned homes dock.
Oh, okay.
We've contacted the homeowner. She was very upset when we first talked to her. We called a second time because there was only one barge there, then the second barge showed up. So he's got two barges there now. And when we called her back, she said, oh, well, we decided that he's really in a pinch, and we decided to let him park it, but it's not going to be very long.
Yeah.
So it's been two weeks now. He has all kinds of room because he, he has a home that, we saw the pictures up on Facebook, so there's, there's all kinds of room there to park his own equipment.
Mm-hmm.
I understand why he thinks that he could just do this.
Okay. I'll take a look at it tomorrow, if it's okay.
All right, thank you, I'll follow up with you.
All right, thanks. Any other public comments? Hearing none. Let's move right on to the consent agenda. Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes, the board meeting of June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, and synopses, check reports, Elginac Clay Library Minutes, marched through June, building and zoning, June of two thousand seventeen, water, June of two thousand seventeen, and the Parks and Rec updates, July of two thousand seventeen.
Support?
It also contains the road watch for July tenth, two thousand seventeen, the Elginac Clay Historical Society Thank You Letter, and Fire Department Letter of Request for Relief from M. Stazowski. Stash.
Okay, do we have support now?
Yes.
Support.
All right. Any discussion on anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposes? Okay, motion carries. All right, next supervisor's report. Been a lot going on the past couple of days, been doing some, looking in, getting our, actually finishing the concession stand in the park, as far as getting some equipment in there. And I actually met with the health department today, and they gave me guidelines, what's going to be needed, so I can go ahead and start putting a plan together and, and get that moving. So if anyone knows, or I'm gonna be looking for a four-compartments stainless steel sink, smaller the better. So that gets us out of having a three-compartment plus a hand sink. But it was a very good meeting with them, and they're gonna work with us quite a bit. I'm also starting to look at the, doing the project I've been talking about for a while, is putting some outside, it's engineered to be outside, but exercise equipment in the park where people walk in. So just real quick, since our last meeting, we had jobby noonner, and that was quite down from years past. I asked, maybe about a quarter of the boats were out there, there's no major issues. If you remember, we were doing a new central command structure for, that's how we were gonna manage this event, through NIMs, and that seemed to work out pretty good. I know there's a couple of things we had to kind of tweak on going forward, but that worked out real well. And then the Fourth of July, we were very busy and lots of people here, but there wasn't really too many major incidents. We had one guy hurt himself at fireworks, but, that I know of, but there wasn't any very ma, or big major incidents. Wanted to talk real quick, it's funny, I didn't see it myself, but, but there was a lot of people complaining about the cemetery on Facebook, I guess, and it's funny, they must have our offices bugged, right? Because we were talking about how, you know, it needed help, you know, parts of it Thursday, and we already started making motions on it. Probably, the, the grass does definitely look shoddy. We've been getting a lot of rain, and this time of year, the, the stuff grows about an inch a day. The water department, you know, it's no excuse, but it's a fact, that we only worked twi, two days last week. We had a storm this Friday, this last Friday and the Friday before. They've been busy dealing with all the branches and stuff. We're getting a quote, we have four trees initially that need to be taken down, and John's getting a quote to have that done. And it's funny, there's, I guess we gotta really start buckling down on the rules some better there. It is against the ordinance that they, people in the cemetery can't plant their own trees. And I saw someone show me a picture on Facebook, I couldn't see it, but where a tree was overgrowing and is, is messing up the headstones. It was between these headstones, and the headstones are starting to heave and everything. But oddly enough, the, the family actually planted that tree, you know, years ago. So, but it definitely needs a little bit cleaning up. We gotta take care of some weeds and try to get some grass going in there. The flagpole, I did order a flag for the flagpole, it was taken down about three weeks ago, it was pretty tore up and tethered. So I just want to make, mention on that, that we are going to make that look a lot better, and we've already been working on it. Interesting project, the St. Clair Flats, are in the St. Clair Flats, many people don't realize it. It's, it's probably the largest remaining nesting colony for black terns, and it's a very endangered bird. And they've been working hand in hand, the DNR, with the Audubon Society to do research with these birds and banding, and so they can kind of monitor them. And they're pretty excited, they got, actually, it's the, Ontario's counterpart to our Michigan DNR is funding this, but on the end of Bruckner's Island, the state has a vacant piece of property there. And they're actually going to be using this to set up a telemetry array, which will, they'll be able to track these birds as far as migrating, and where they're nesting, and the mount, mounts of them. And then they are gonna put up another nesting area on this, this piece of property. But it's an interesting project, and like I say, they're working with the Ontario government and Audubon, and everyone's pretty excited about that. So, but we definitely have our share of black terns, which is a good thing back there. We, we did have a high water, or, yeah, basically, there was a high water town hall meeting, what, it was about three weeks ago? And I tell you what, the results from this meeting, I, what, two hundred people?
There?
Yeah, about. And it was well, well represented. We had the Coast Guard, the Corps of Engineers, I had about six freighter companies there, the Lakes Carrier Association president, a few other people, the sheriff was there, I'm probably missing a few people.
Officials from the...
Who were there.
Public offices.
Yes.
Dan Lauer's office.
Yeah. Oh, no, Stabinoff's office, Senator Stabinoff's office, and Senator Gary Peters' office. And result of it is, the freighters voluntarily have slowed down, and a remarkable amount. Since that meeting, I think we've only gotten one report of a wave, which, before, it was daily. And so the freighter part of the, of the meeting went well, and I got very good results from that. We're still working on better enforcement on our water, to enforce the two-hundred, six-hundred-foot rule. The sheriff was there, and from the marine patrol, Lieutenant Paul Reed, and he was fully admitted, he, you know what, we haven't written one ticket, that's from Port Huron all the way down to the lake. And he gave me his word, they're gonna start writing more tickets, and I know that they have. So I still would like to see more boats on the water, and I'm still trying to work with them to get that, but no luck with that. But they are writing more tickets.
More patrol boats, right, Ernie?
What's that?
More patrol.
More patrol, yes. Yeah, they, we need, you know what, if there's a flashing blue light out in the water, people will slow down automatically. And that's what we really need. We are doing some repair and maintenance on, in the park, some swings. We did have some parts for some, and I know there's two swings that are still under repair. We got parts ordered for the handicap swings, and hopefully they'll be in soon. Uh, let's see. Pickleball, we're, we're working with the schools converting to tennis, tennis courts into pickleball courts. And also, I ordered removable pickleball net. I was gonna set it up in the basketball court, the far basketball court, so if they want to play basketball, they can pick it up and move it. But we'll put some lines up there, so we'll have a pickleball court here, too. We do have a volunteer that's actually going to help and set up times, help teach people or teach people how to play it, and try to get a league going, so that's exciting. State Rep Dan Lauer's, he, he did change it from the announcement of my last meeting. He's having office hours here Friday, July fourteenth, from noon, from eleven to noon. So he'll be here this, coming Friday. And so if you want to talk to Dan Lauer's about anything with the state level, he'll be here and answer your questions. Okay, and we have started the initial steps to become a safety town, along with Elginac, we're working on this. There'll be more to come on that. Received a lot of good feedback about kayaking on the Crisp and Blue Trail. And just about every weekend, I've seen numerous kayaks on it, and I've gotten a lot of good feedback, people from out of town that are using this trail. And it's, it's pretty exciting. I want to start, I'd like to start, friends of the Crisp and Blue Way group do advisory committee, and I had a couple of people approach me, said they're, you know, willing to volunteer to do a few things. I think where it needs approval is where we portage, especially along Crisp and Road, to make it a little easier for them to get in and out and cross. And I had a couple of people say, you know, I'd volunteer to do something there. And then also, again, the second portage in the, in the DNR. But it's gotten a lot, a lot of good feedback from that, and like I say, a lot of people are... And like I say, a lot of people are coming here from out of town to do that. I talked to Kristen at Schoolhouse Grill, she's getting in some business from it. And so it's a good thing. All right, upcoming events, our consumer education series on Harson's Island, Tuesday the 18th, we have online safety. That starts at seven o'clock at the Reader's Cove. Music in the Park, July 13th will be Mickey Meldrum, Mickey Meldrum and the Meldrum Brothers over in Elginak. That's sponsored by Little Caesar Pizza. And that's the last concert in the Elginak Park. And then the following week, July 20th, we'll move over to our Clay Township Park next door and that one will be featuring Burnwood. And that, that one's sponsored by Rose Marine. Of course, big thanks, thanks to ML Chartier and Grace Performance for being the lead sponsor on that program. Both those concerts will be, there'll be a lot of people at them. July 15th and 16th is a, we're celebrating the 25th anniversary of the Miss, of the Elginak Clay Historical Society. They're going to be showing off Miss America 10 over at their museum. If you've never seen that boat up close, it's definitely worth it. It's, it's a beautiful boat. And then also they're, they have a group coming in, the Old Outboard and, um, the Old Outboard is, is a club, club that has a bunch of antique outboard motors. They're going to be bringing a lot of these old antique outboard motors to, to show, show off. Lots of stuff going on. July 15th over in Brown's Field, across, right across the street from the ferry is the classic car show that the association puts on. They're expecting over 200 cars for this. So last year was their first one and it was a very good event. They had a DJ going and it, it was a lot of fun. July 22nd, Saturday, Boats for a Vet, that's the idle hour at 9:30. Any vet wants to get a boat ride, just show up there and they go out for a boat ride for a couple of hours and they come back and have lunch. If you want to give a vet a boat ride, you're, you can just show up there about 9, 9:30 and you could take a, they'll use your boat and to take a couple of guys out. Might want to pack a couple of vet beverages in the cooler and, and, but if you have any questions on that, get ahold of me. I know Ken Forrester is running that. I could put you in contact with him, yeah.
I got a call from Ken a couple of days ago wanting to know if I knew anybody that wanted to participate in that because they have a shortage of captains as your increase in number of vets.
Okay, yep. I'm going to talk to the chief about getting a fire boat there for it. And well, if that's the case, I'll have my boat there and then our police boat too. So that's a great, that's a great program. Ah, let's see. Tigers versus Twins. We have a bus trip Saturday, August the 13th. You can get on the bus here and take a bus ride down to Comerica and see the Tigers. Hopefully they'll beat the Twins. Bus leaves at 11 o'clock, it's $49 per person and it's limited to 50 seats. First come, first cur, uh, first come, first cur. No, it's cur balls. Eight better, eight better. So, but that's a, that's always fun. And if it all goes well, you know, we're going to try to do some, some events at, for Lions games and the, the Red Wings, hopefully not the Dead Wings. Elginak Clay Museum Vendor Show is going to be in our park August 5th, 10 to 3, 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. And we have our youth tennis league starting up, ages five through 14, Tuesdays and Thursdays, August 15th through the 24th. 65 bucks. It comes with a tee shirt, racket, balls and a goodie bag. And you got to register before August 6th and that's starting to fill up too. And somewhere, where is it? Ah, just announced today, we're going to be doing yoga classes in the park. If I go to this, I'm going to be in the back row. July, Tuesday, July 25th, sorry, I've done it before.
No spandex, Ernie.
No spandex. Very loose clothes. July 25th from 5:45 to 6:45, it's $5 per session, which is a great deal for a good yoga class, all levels. And please bring a yoga sticky mat and water to the class. Give us a call if you need any information, but I know there's a lot of demand for that and we're already getting a lot of action on that. So I think that's all I have for the supervisor's report. So moving right along, Chief Rose, do you have a fire report? Thanks.
Good evening. I attended one meeting for the month of June and that was the St. Clair County Chief Association and the topic up there was on the pagers. Some of the county fire departments are still having issues with their pagers. They're receiving phones with no voice or voice with no phone. So county dispatch is working on that to resolve that problem. We at the time, we don't have any problems or we have very few problems with our pagers. They've done pretty well for us. Pretty happy. Paolo Fire Gear came in, our equipment came in and measured their 12 firefighters for their turnout here. So that's been ordered. We should get that within six to eight, eight weeks. I've received some boots in already on it, so hopefully we'll get everything in here shortly. Jobbie Noonner, it was very low response. We attended to some people that had minor cuts and abrasions. We attended to some intoxicated people and we found for, relocated four personnel to their last home.
Go ahead.
Pretty uneventful. It was, it was good. I'd like to thank TriMS, Elginak Fire Department, St. Clair Fire Department, IRA and Marine City Fire Department for their assistance on that day. We also responded to Flamingo Road Bridge and we flushed the bridge twice.
Yeah.
That's it.
You think we, I don't know, do you think we could help this gentleman out and outside and we could take a look at it?
Take a look at it.
Let's see. Is that problem now, you have that?
Oh, we were-
Or just after we flush it?
It's for two days after it's flushed.
Okay.
It's like a toilet right there. So it's for two days after that and depending on where the wind's blowing, it'll, it'll meander down and forth.
Okay.
So-
Well, maybe we can go, go out there and break it up.
No, I don't know what breaking it up. These are big masts. They should be pushed off to the side or disposed out somehow because they're either, they're either floored down and when the weeds come up, they're going to linger on top of the weeds. And it just, it turns into even a bigger mess.
Okay.
At one time, didn't they used to have a weed thrasher in the area? You picked it all up and put it on a car and took it out?
Nope.
They did that over, I just saw it by Anchor Bay Drive. I think they had some different-
Yeah. I don't know, not that I'm ever aware of. I, I think Bray Lake's Doc and Deck has some kind of a thing that does that himself. And I could give Wally a call. If I, if I recall, he had something to do that. I don't know if, if it worked out or not, but I can give him a call now I think about that. So.
It's more than a minute.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. Little thing, yeah, thanks chief. A little thing and, yeah. But then it's, the problem is where you put it, you know, you can't take it to landfill. You know?
Wherever you go with it, we can put it up on land and it dries out its all water.
Right.
So it just crumples in the fire.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, unfinished business, we have none, new business. We have to set public hearings for the police, fire rate and garbage, garbage fee and police and fire mileage rates. I'll tell you right now, there is no changes to any of them, but we have to have a public hearing and then vote on it to, just to renew it, so.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the police and fire mileage rate and the garbage fees for August 21st, 2017 at 7 p.m. And that would be on the Harson's Island, at the Harson's Island Lions Hall. It'll be our meeting on Harson's Island.
Support?
Yeah, motion support. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. That's approved, we will have a meeting there. Or a public hearing that day. Fire Department approved the operation, operational policy that Chief Rose drafted and you have before you. Any questions or anything on that? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the fire department operational policy. No section number on it, it's dated May 22nd, 2017.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion on that? Or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have quotes on getting our roof repaired on the police station. This is on the old section of the, of the police department and it does leak quite a bit, especially when, when it rains. But you know, they got, what, you have two or three buckets out, you put out. It's much needed. The low bid is the same company that did the roof on the new section when it was done. So they, you know, it's a pretty reputable company and they know what they're getting into. There's probably quite a big difference in the, in the quotes, so entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the roof repair for the police department building from Zimmer Roofing in the amount of $13,819 from line item 20700093300.
Okay, we have motion?
Support.
We have support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote please.
Kristy Hilton, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have a resolution for local road funding match for St. John's Drive. What this is, the county has a program where they'll help us repave a road and up to 50, they'll do a 50/50 match, up to $50,000. This is what we, we were lucky enough to obtain for the Colony Isle subdivision that's going to happen this year. And we slated Anchor Bay or St. John's Drive for next year. There's probably one or two more culverts we have to get fixed before we do this because it's my pet peeve, you all know, to have to fix a culvert after we just paved a darn thing. And I'm estimating that the bid should come right, in around $85,000 for the whole job. And so if that's the case, you know, our costs will be half of that. It's going to be one and a half inch to two inch asphalt. John, we're going to have to take a look at those manholes, see if we have to raise them or not. This is, this won't happen until next year. But we're lucky enough, there is a trick on writing these grants because typically they only give them to townships every other year, but I know what it takes to score high. So I have, I've gotten five in a row, so I'm hoping to have six in a row, so. That being said, I'm looking for a motion. We have to have the resolution to, from the board to apply for it.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-23, a resolution relative to request for local road system funding assistance.
Support? Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Artie, you mentioned the raising of the manhole covers, right? And how much is that, are we going to add something to that in case that happens to happen?
What, what do you have to do for that, John?
Typically you do have to fund the cover.
A what?
You should have the funding to cover.
Yeah, well, the funding to cover that. But it, it's just, it's no parts, right?
It's what?
You don't have to, we don't have to buy parts to do it. You just rate-
It's mostly labor.
Right, it's just labor to raise it up.
Okay.
And we, we, sometimes you have to do it, sometimes you don't. We should have done it on a tough road because there's a couple of them that, you know, it sinks down when you drive over when we did that.
Then it's the contractor and go tell us what you want.
Yeah. When it goes out to bid, the contractor will take a look at it.
Yeah, just to be clear, this wasn't a dollar amount we were approving. We were just approving the resolution to complete the application.
Right. Yep. It'll go out to bids probably next fall for completion and next, the following summer. Probably on next, next budget year, not this one. Okay. Oh, we, we didn't pass it yet, do we?
No, we have motion and support.
We have motion and support. Roll call please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have the Colony Tower Beacon Light. I want to see the, the light on top of that. It's, and definitely the colony, as Homewards Association does, I got a letter of support and they're excited about that. It is a landmark of ours and basically I want to tell people, you know, the lights are on, we're home and we're open for business. We can do a four mile nautical mile light or a 10 mile nautical light. And they assure me, in the past, I guess it was quite a long time ago, they tried to put a light up there, but it was a strobe light. It was blinking. And it was not LED and it bothered some people, so they turned it off. This is going to be a steady light. It's LED and they, they assure me it shines straight out, not down. And they assure me that it's not going to give any of our residents any heartburn or trouble. And if it does, we'll turn it off. But I, I put it before you, I myself recommend the 10 mile nautical and with the board's pleasure.
Is this, it's not a strobe light, but is it going to be just going in one direction?
No.
Or is it, it's going to be 360?
No. It's a solid, a 360 solid light.
Does it have any effect on radiation?
Nope. We're all, we're all good with that.
Who will see it at the end of the light? 10 miles?
It'll be the Batman, you know, the Bat-
Hopefully not you. You don't want to see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
Are you able to see it from the vendor center?
No, you'll, you'll, you'll see it about, you'll, you'll be able to see it almost to Mount Clemens. So it's kind of cool. And-
It's not going to light up anybody's backyard?
No. And like I say, yeah, there's, there's no problems with the FAA, checked in with that. We did look at doing a blue light just because it's different and it would stand out a little more, but they kind of found it on the, on the blue light. They use blue lights on some of the runways and stuff, so we're sticking with-
We've had lights up there before.
Yeah.
Is there a permit that we, that is required by the FAA?
No. We just asked for their blessing, they gave it to us. No, no permit required.
So we need a motion.
Yep. With the board's pleasure, you want to make a motion so we can talk about it more if needed or?
I'll make a motion to approve the Colony Tower Beacon Light, 10 mile light for $3,552.80 from line item 10126593300.
Support?
Okay, motion and support. And this will actually come out of our building maintenance line item, which is 101-265-933. I got $25,000 in there for building maintenance and we did kind of budget for this, so.
Okay, I'm excited. I'd like to see the investment in the tower. It's a nice tower. I think it's a big part of Clay Township.
And I'm actually looking at getting, just so the board knows, I've talked to it a couple of times. I, I've been talking to the association, they, they claim that they have some structural drawings of the tower. I'm trying to get that from them and I want to have a structural engineer look at it and give us a, kind of like a maintenance schedule, what we have to do to, you know, keep it up and keep it good. I sure hate to see anything happen and what's going, you know, if something's going on that we don't know about. And I'd like to get a regular schedule on, on just keeping up with it. So it's, it's a big landmark for us and I'd like to keep it looking good. So I'll be, I probably, I'm going to be getting quotes to do the- So I'll be, I probably, I'm going to be getting quotes to do the engineering assessment on that tower soon, too.
Last time was, what, 20 years ago?
Yeah.
And it was a significant cost then?
Yep.
And didn't we have a fund-me page? Before, at that point in time, I remember something like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what they did, but I know it wasn't cheap. But you know how it is, you can spend a little now or a lot later. So I like to do a little now than a lot later, hopefully. So, okay, we have motion and support, right?
Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we've been asked to give permission for fireworks for the Algenack Baptist Church on 8543 Marsh Road. I think this is their second or third time they've done this out there. And to my recollection, I, we didn't have one person complain about it.
They, I notice they didn't include a timeframe within their letter.
Right.
Do you have any idea what that was?
No, but usually 15 minutes, 20 minutes. I mean, I would say let's give them a window from 10 to 11.
10 to 10:30.
10 to 10:30?
Yeah.
10 to 10:30 with approval from the fire chief?
Yep. So if you want to put-
What was that, Cindy? What was it you said?
I said with approval from our fire chief, have him go out and see what's going on over there.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks request from the Algenack Baptist Church fireworks on August 14th, with approval from our fire chief from 10 to 10:30.
Support? Okay, we have motion and support. Any other discussion with that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have a request to use, park use next door, August 26th, 6 p.m. for the Woodside Bible Church to do a movie, outside movie. They did one last year. They want to basically do the same thing. And encloses their certificate of liability insurance. And basically what they want to do in the park, a kind of a synopsis, you know, they're going to put a 10-by-20-foot tent and some tables and chairs. Do some face painting and the screen and projection system.
That's going to go until 11:15? What time is our noise ordinance?
11. I'm going to see if we can-
Can we get them to start at 15 minutes?
Yeah, I'm going to see that, yeah. Let's do it from 9.
I think the problem is the daytime, they're doing it on a screen.
Right.
They're probably pushing it at 9:15 so you can actually see the projection. You know, the sun doesn't start setting until like 9:30.
So it's not in the tent?
No.
The screen's not in the tent?
Oh, no, no, no. It's outside. Like, we did the one, we did Finding Nemo, worked out real well. And they did it last year, too. They're not really loud, though, then it's, it's right back at them.
This one's Beauty and the Beast. Disney's Beauty and the Beast.
Yeah.
The new one. I see they provided a certificate of insurance?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
For liability?
Yeah, we do. We have it.
Okay, and the service for food certificate or anything like that?
Uh...
It says it's catered by license kitchen.
It's catered by license kitchen?
Okay.
And we might have our concession stand up by then, too.
That'd be cool.
Yeah. Just saying.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the park use on August 26th, 2017, for movie in the park, Beauty and the Beast, from 9:15 to 11:15, along with their 6 p.m. bounce house, face painting, and refreshments, with support of our police chief, who's not here.
Support? Yeah, motion and support. Like I say, they did the, basically the same thing last year, and we've had events. I know the Baptist, Algenack Baptist Church had events in there. Algenack Church of Christ have used our parks for several times for events, so it's nothing.
I don't have a problem with them using the event, just the timing, that's all.
Right, right.
Our noise ordinance, our fireworks ordinance, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, that's all.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
I got the motion and support.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Board member comments? Should I start? Mark, how you doing down there?
Okay, we had the planning commission, the July 12th meeting has been canceled. So we're still waiting to put together a public hearing on one of the ordinances. That's all I have.
Okay. Joanne?
ZBA met, and we had three appellate's come up, and we approved two. I mean, we denied two and approved one. And it's in your packet. You can read what it is. It's mostly variances, side yard variance.
Setbacks.
Setbacks. And another comment, I was reading the March through June meetings of the library, and they certainly had a lot of things that needed to be taken care of.
Yep.
And they got all that, you know, lights and restrooms, and it's good to see that they got a lot of things to take care of for, for that library.
Mm-hmm. Cindy?
Of course.
Of course.
I would like to thank everyone that came out and expressed their concerns with the blight, because if they're not getting taken care of in our building department with our code enforcement or our building, was it building official?
Yeah, inspector?
Inspector, yeah, we don't know about it. So I appreciate everyone coming out here and letting us know that there is issues going on there that we can certainly follow up on. And as far as the Flamingo Canal, I just want you to know that I feel your pain. My boat is also on that side in the canal. It's on the weed side where they come through halfway down, so I understand. And we've had to muddle through our, our own portions of weeds as well. However, I also know what it smells like down on the end, when the weeds are so far out that they're now blocking two canals, so... I, I don't know what the other options are, but we are constantly looking for something else. We did contact the road commission, I believe.
Yep, twice.
They were not looking in any way, shape, or form to help us out, so... We'll still keep pressing on about it, though.
Thank you. Sandy?
I do. I didn't have anything last time, so now I have a whole page.
I know. Okay.
First of all, I wanted to thank Cindy Babish, because I have read through her Parks and Recs report, and she is always-
Rocking and rolling.
She's got so many things coming up and in the works, and I actually contacted her about some toddler programs that she got right into and talked back and forth with her a little bit. So thank you to her for all her hard work. Also was out on the water this weekend and did notice a much bigger sheriff presence and wanted to thank them. They were actually off to the side, just waiting for people, instead of just going through. So you knew their purpose.
Speed trap.
Kind of. To piggyback off of what Cindy had said about the weeds, I wanted to thank the fire department for going out there and clearing them. It is a problem in other ways, but thank you for clearing them. That's all I got.
Chris?
I guess I want to give a shout-out again to all the freighter captains who are making a conscious effort to slow down in their travels. I didn't anticipate such a, such a response and such a quick response, and it's really making a difference.
That was a good meeting, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, yeah, and it was more than lip service.
Right.
Which is really the binding agent. Next, we have to tackle the pleasure boating violations, if you will, the 200, 600-foot rule. Still tremendous wake disturbance in coming up over the docks. So I think if we could do our due diligence as a township and keep informing people of the 200, 600-foot rule, along with the sheriff presence, you know, maybe the end result will be, will be desirable, what we, what we seek.
Yep, a lot of this education.
Yep.
So... Christine?
No comment.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to expand on what Cindy said about our blight, and it's an ongoing problem, and it gets really frustrating, too, because, you know, you're dealing with people with their own private property, too. And our rights can only go so far what we can make them do or not do. And it gets frustrating. I mean, we've gone, we've taken many people to court and won, and it's an expense for the township, but we have to do it. Every once in a while, we have to make an example on, on people, but it's, it ain't easy. Yeah, I will, I'll go by your two places and check them out. Yeah, and Chief, too, what we did, too, not only Flamingo, is those weeds, they were under the Audubon Bridge, too. It was a mess there, and-
Is there a barge or something?
Yeah, there was a barge there, Chris Marines there. And, you know, we, we went there to clean it up, and that, you know, that was a job. And, you know, where else they ended up is Flamingo, so I went there the next day. That's just how it works. And, yeah, so it's, it's a problem, and we know it, and we'll try to get the best solution if we can for it. That's all we can do. It's a problem. It will help once we get the Flamingo Bridge replaced, hopefully in two years, because it's an old bridge with the piling, and that's what plugs it up there. It doesn't allow the weeds to go through.
Nothing else? The county doesn't want to help? Maybe they can bump that up on their list of things, if they don't want to help fix the problem?
It will be, wait a minute, that will be, yeah. So every year we bring up that bridge, it got pushed back a year.
And that bridge is 2015.
Yeah. Oh, I did mention, did I mention that they're going to be replacing the bridges on Anchor Bay Drive? Okay, I did, didn't I? They're going to do one this fall, the first one, and then the other two the following year. They have weight restrictions on them now. Actually, the worst one is the middle one, but they can't fix that one until they do the first one. It makes sense, or it'd be a lot easier to do it.
I think they should start on Flamingo.
Yeah. And been getting a lot of calls on high water. Yes, the water's high, and like I say, you know, there's issues with, with pleasure boats and erosion, and we are doing as much as we can. We handed out two no-wake signs today. I got still some small ones left.
Do we have sandbag available?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, we do have sandbags available. Should they go to the water or fire department for those? Water department has them. So give us a call, we can get you free sandbags. I think we have access to about 10,000 of them right now. That's a lot of sandbags.
Unfilled?
Unfilled. I'm going to look for one of those-
Funnels.
Yeah, they make a funnel, so it's a lot easier to fill them. It turns into a one-person job. We used to have them back 15 years ago. We don't have them anymore. I'll, I'll see if I can get a couple of those for residents. I did talk to somebody today, you know, the water's right up to the cap on their seawall, and it's high. It's, you know, and a lot of, this is, we haven't had high water like this for 30 years, and it's the first time some of these people have experienced it. You know, they're new to the area, and we've been through it before. But, so, yeah, we do have sandbags available. Get ahold of me or the water department, we can get them to you. And I'm, summer's been great so far. We've been having nice weather, except for a couple windy storms. I felt sorry for the people who were out of power Friday, but DTE did their best to get us on, and, but it's been nice during the day and kind of cool at night, and, so, yeah, it's been good so far. So I think that's all I have.